Franklin County Board of County Commissioners is now in session for this regular meeting, August fifteenth. It's good to see everyone here this morning. We're going to get started this morning with this agenda. Commissioner Ward, will you please leave us some prayer and pledge today?
Yes. When we come to you today to conduct our county business, we pray that you will guide our thoughts, guide our minds, guide our hearts into making the best decisions for the county and the people that live within it and visit it as well. We pray for Commissioner Lockley this morning and anybody else in the community that needs a prayer or two. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Mr. Morone, I know of nothing we need to add to the agenda, correct?
I have one. I guess we can cut it in addition. On the front agenda on the P and Z report six, I left off fifteen eighty-two Highway ninety-eight. It was part of the original P and Z agenda. I just added it to your online agenda. I'll add it to the public agenda as the meeting is going on, okay? So if you look at your online agenda, and it won't be in your notebooks, unfortunately, so, yeah, but it's fifteen eighty-two Highway ninety-eight.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve this amended agenda?
So, ma'am.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Amison.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That's unanimous. Up next, we're going to approve the minutes and pay the county bills.
Aye.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Amison. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That's unanimous. Next, we have public comments. I'm going to just call them in the order I received them. Anthony Del Campo, please come forward. State your name for the record, sir. You have three minutes.
Hello. My name is Anthony Del Campo. I just, I want to basically come out and just say that I have a concern with our roadways at Alligator Point. And I did file a complaint or concern and did an interest card, and they came out and cleaned the storm drains, and they did a really good job, and I'm thankful for you guys making that happen because I know your guys' jobs are very hard. But I noticed that the striping has not been done, and we have had not maintenance, and I can only speak for what I see. And I believe that it is a safety issue for the residents and the members that come and visit our community. And I feel like that, I tried to look up if there was a comprehensive plan on what the plan is to fix our roads in the future, and I couldn't find nothing. And I just feel like that we need to come up with a plan to clean our roadways up and get striping done. I did reach out to Mr. Howard, but he has not gotten back to me about what the plan is. And I feel that it's important to keep our community safe and clean, and that's why I'm here. So I'm just trying to figure out what the best thing for us to do moving forward is.
I can tell you that we have been working on a comprehensive plan. That's one of the documents we are missing.
Mm-hmm.
And roadways will be part of that.
Okay.
So far, what we have, and we're also going to be talking about this morning, actually being a part and standing up a regional transportation group that we have not had in the past. We've just been by ourselves. So those are all steps we're taking in that direction, sir.
Okay. And so where, what's, is there a deadline, like a timestamp on that?
No, we will know more after we get this group started.
Okay.
As soon as we can put the information out, we will.
Okay. Yeah, that would be awesome because at the end of the day, I'm just trying to make this county safe and clean and help you guys be successful in your jobs. And that's why I'm here, so.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Debbie Jordan, is she on the line?
Yeah. She appeared to be on the line, sir.
Ms. Jordan, if you would unmute on your end. There she goes, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Please proceed.
Thank you. Debbie Jordan of Lanark Village coming to you this morning with a few issues. First thing I want to do is give Commissioner Sanders and Planning Director, Assistant Planning Director Mark Churington major kudos for approving the Island View Park site plan. Well, I've seen the site plan. It looks marvelous. I'm understanding that it's approved. It's beautiful. So thank you so much for that. We need those improvements. That's the first thing. Also, back in February seventh, Ms. Barbara Roars approached the commission with concerns about the lack of fire hydrants on the west side of Lanark. We don't have a fire department. It does not look to be progressing like we had hoped it would be. And this is, with no fire hydrants on the west side of Lanark, this could be a safety and insurance nightmare. So I'm, I know, we understood that the city of Carabelle is tied up putting water, sewer, whatever, at Woodhill Road and Lighthouse Estates. But Chairman Jones, you had mentioned that during February seventh that the county needed to look into it with the city, but I did a request for information from the city, and they don't have anything on it. So if you guys could check into that, I know that it would bring us a lot of comfort here in Lanark to know we have fire hydrants in the world. Also, I know I repeat myself a lot, but S four zoning district, please, Commissioners, read the regulations, see how much more restricted our neighborhood is than the rest of the county. Look at the setbacks, fence heights, and lowering heights of our fence, I'm sorry. And it's time for a public meeting to discuss bringing these regulations into the new millennium. Also, in Lanark Village proper, where the barracks are, painting of row numbers on center lines will assist first responders as well as delivery companies in locating units in this very confusingly numbered neighborhood. EMS and Carabelle Fire Chief Carl Whaley appeared supportive of this solution. Last but not least, this is, I guess, a road department issue to alleviate the tight and limited parking on Parker Avenue. And with Chilis Hall being on Heffernan Drive, would you consider a traffic study to determine if making Heffernan a one-way going toward Pine Street and Oak Street and Parker a one-way going toward ninety-eight? This may be a feasible solution to avoid congestion and get more cars in there and not have such a tight road. That's all I've got this morning. I thank you guys very much for hearing me out.
Thank you. Ms. Wanda Rose, is she also on the line, Michael? I don't know if she's over there.
Good morning. My name is Wanda Rose. I'd like to thank you for letting me speak today. Back in two thousand thirteen, we started seeing issues with RVs. We all know about this. In two thousand fifteen, Board of County Commissioners wanted to revise the RV ordinance, and nothing was done. In March of two thousand twenty-three, we started this up again. It is now August two thousand and twenty-three, and still nothing's been done. And I know y'all have been reviewing this and trying to appease everyone, but it's really getting bad here. I just wondered if Franklin County waiting to, we have an issue like Gulf County does, which has just destroyed their coastline. Franklin County also needs a code enforcement officer, and I understand we've got monies maybe for next year, but at the rate our county is moving, we're going to have some really big issues if we don't get a handle on this. We live in a very unique area. I'm not from here. I moved here twenty-one years ago. I'm also a real estate agent, but I do not want to see this county destroyed like South Florida. RVs parked on vacant land. Do not increase your property taxes, which pays your county employees or your salaries. So we need to really get a handle on this. I sent all of you an email last night. I don't know if any of you looked at it, and I know one did. My concern with that property is not the power pole that's there because there was an old mobile home there that was torn down. So there was already a power pole there at one time, but now they have a new one there, a larger one. And if you read my email, you know what my concern is. And that's on the agenda for today, so take a look at it. If you want pictures of what my concern is, I have pictures on my phone. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wanda. All right, Mr. John Solomon.
Morning, Commissioners. John Solomon, TDC Director. Here just for a simple update from when we did the budget workshops. The TDC Board voted last week to recommend using the up to ten percent for the House Bill seven oh six three. I had Ms. Aaron come and explain to the TDC Board what that statute is going to be. As we know, it's still not in the statute, but it is going to be. It was approved in July. It just hasn't made it into the statute. So she explained to them what the process for sure is going to be. And she advised that we, you know, go ahead and follow the process and recommend, moving on to the county commission, that the TDC Board unanimously recommended using that up to ten percent for those usages per the statute.
Thank you, Mr. Solomon. And to further elaborate, so I made sure the TDC Board knew when we were having the discussion that we're looking for recommendation from them because it's the proper way to do it. But we also, and making sure that they understood, it's going to require us to amend our spending plan because that wasn't part of what was in there. So that's something, you know, so we'll probably have to schedule a public hearing, attorney's order to be able to do that. But that was all part of the recommendation they were sending to us. Yes.
And I would like to go ahead and cover item number seven on my report.
Okay.
And let's see, it was pursuant to receiving the recommendation from the Tourist Development Council to allow for up to ten percent of tourist development sales tax proceeds to be allocated for public safety services pursuant to the changes authorized by House Bill seven zero six three. Does the board agree with the recommendation? If the board would like to proceed, the TDC spending plan will need to be updated and amended to reflect the change. And I do have a board action item here, board action for staff to work alongside the Tourist Development Council to develop an updated draft spending plan to come back before the board for review and comments before scheduling the public hearing to formally enact the plan.
Okay. Do we need a motion for that?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Amison, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. Anything else, Mr. Solomon?
That's all the information out of my head.
All right. Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Anyone else have anything for Mr. Solomon while he's here? Thank you, sir.
Y'all have a wonderful afternoon.
You too. Richard Lewis, Louie, you're up next, sir.
Good morning. Richard Lewis, Franklin County, Williams EMS Director. I have no action items. I have several informational items for everybody. I want to start off with some just updates within EMS. About a month ago, we got with Survival Flight out of Tallahassee, and they donated a windsock for Lanark. We got with Carl Whaley at the Carabelle Fire Department, and he was able to install the windsock for Lanark. So they have a new regulation windsock that was donated by Survival Flight. So I want to thank Carabelle Fire Department and Survival Flight for the donation. I've been in contact with the Lanark Fire Department with the individual, I'm not sure where he's from, I think from Tallahassee, and the Fire Department itself about doing an EMR and CPR class. I'm still waiting on dates, but I am trying to work with them to provide a emergency medical responder course. We do have an EMR class coming. We're going to do it in either East Point or St. George Island. We haven't decided which one is going to be best for everybody yet. We'll have Appalachia, St. George, and East Point attending that one. And then when we do the one for Lanark, anybody from Alligator Point and Carabelle is more than welcome to come to that one. We, and that class starts on October sixteenth. In the past two months, we've done multiple CPR classes throughout the community, and we've had more than a hundred people, being first responders and people from the high school, county employees. We've had a lot of people attend, which is fantastic because our bystander CPR has been really low in this county throughout history. So having more people comfortable doing CPR would definitely improve the outcome of cardiac arrest. Thanks to the county commission, we got the USDA grant for the two New Amelizes. I got really lucky and secured two chassis early on, and they're supposed to be delivered in September. I don't have an exact date yet, but they told me the end of August or sometime in December, or sometime September, excuse me. So that's great news. At that point, all of our frontline trucks will be twenty twenty-two or newer, and that is really good for us in the county. We also recently got some grant money from the state that I have the ability to use to send Franklin County residents to EMT or paramedic school. I've already got three people interested. I still don't have an application from them yet, but I've been communicating with them on a daily basis, trying to get everything rolling. but I've been communicating with them on a daily basis, trying to get everything rolling with that. So that's great news to get more residents involved in EMS here. So I sent a bunch of paperwork, and I apologize that I got a mix up in the email. The only difference in the original email and what I passed out today is the original email is from 2022. And I included today, and hopefully we can update it for everybody, from January 1st, 2023 to the end of June. And I did that, you know, in a six-month period to kind of give an update of how we're doing this year so far. And that's the only thing that's different. I did this in a rush to get everybody copies. So the numbering is not exactly how I wanted. So I just kind of walked through this, and if you guys have any questions, just stop me and ask questions as we go. So first, page one, and then page five are the same document from 2022 and 2023. This just shows our call volume from each zone. Being Alligator Point, Appalachia, East Point, Landarch, St. George, and Caribou. And you'll also see a few from Leon, Gulf, Liberty, and Wakulla. What those are is mutual aid. The Leon County is when we have swing bed patients, and the Bay County is when we have swing bed coming back to Weems. We are offered to go pick that patient up to promote people to use Weems' swing bed program, which is really good for us and really good for Weems. Gulf, Liberty, Gulf, Liberty and Wakulla is mutual aid. Whenever they're out of ambulances, we go help them out if we have some ambulances available. And when we run out of ambulances, they come and help us out. So it's like a mutual thing we do for our surrounding counties. Does anybody have any questions about this?
Go ahead.
Okay. The next one's going to be page two and page six. And this is same thing from 2022 and 2023. I'm sorry, page two and four. So this is the total record volume, our total calls we run by disposition, meaning whether we transported the patient, we got canceled before we got there, patient refused for us to take them to the hospital. And up top, you'll see a number of transports, transport percentage, and this is how many patient contact that we actually transported. And this is including when we get canceled. We show up and say for jellyfish, and the patient don't want to go to the hospital, they just want to be checked out, and they refuse to go to the hospital. Any questions on this or the layout of it? So just to update, this paperwork came directly from our system. I printed, I can pull reports within our patient care report system. And so all these numbers came directly from our system. So next to page three and page six, this is a total transport by destination. So where we go whenever we do transport the patient. And this shows like, you know, how many we fly out from the Appalachia landing zone, how many we take to Weems, to Sacred Heart, to Capital Regional, all the different hospitals. And what's nice about this report is there's a bar graph up top that'll kind, it's a good breakdown that you can look at a glance and kind of see the majority of where we go. So if you notice, you know, the vast majority is Georgie Williams Hospital, then right below that's TMH. Because TMH is one of the primary hospitals in the region, so we go there more than we go to most of their hospitals. And you'll see on the 2023, if you look down towards the bottom, I have Ascension Sacred Heart and the Gulf starred. The reason for that is our system changed the name is sometime in February. So it's showing up under two different lines. You'll see on the first page is starred, and then on the second page, there's a, it's called Sacred Heart on the Gulf. So our system just automatically updates every now and then. So that's why I starred both of them, because that's the same hospital.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Louis, in terms of Sacred Heart, it's not a higher level of care than Weems?
No.
Can you elaborate, just so the community knows, why you're transporting patients to that facility versus Weems?
Yes, we have several patients that request to go to Sacred Heart. We don't dictate, we don't mandate people go to certain hospitals. If you have a high acuity, say a heart attack, stroke, or something that's what we call high acuity, we will force a patient to go to either Tallahassee or Panama City, depending on which one's closer and where our doctors are. But if they meet certain criteria, being a lower acuity, and they demand to go to Sacred Heart, then we, what I have my crews do, they call me, they tell me what's going on with the patient, and then they have to explain to the patient about that Weems and Sacred Heart is the same level of care. And we also have a document that they sign saying that they refuse to go to Weems or want to go to Sacred Heart.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Louis, some of that, just a follow-up question. Some of that would be, for instance, if, depending on what I'm having, if you pick me up and you're taking me, I know Weems, but I don't think Sacred Heart on the Gulf or Ascension Sacred Heart over in St. George, neither one of them are Level 1 trauma centers.
No, no.
So that, you know, I mean, if I'm having a heart issue, I need you to get me to Ascension Bay or to TMH or somewhere that's a Level 1 trauma center?
Yeah, and you know, our guys aren't perfect. We do make mistakes sometimes because we don't have CT machines. We don't, we can't do blood work on the ambulance. But when I pull our records, I say about 95% of the time, they make good, solid decisions on where to go. So we try to keep as many as we can in county because if we go to Weems, then that truck is back available immediately.
Yes.
And that helps with our response times, which we'll get to next.
Thank you.
Yes. So page four and seven are our response times. And I know this is a, in certain parts of the county, this is a big issue. That's why I wanted to show exactly what we're doing, the good and the bad. So up top on both pages, you'll see our average response time. This is throughout the entire, this is taking everything into account. And 2022 was 10 minutes and 28 seconds. So far in 2023, up to June, the end of June, it's 11 minutes and 13 seconds. That's average. Just to explain how EMS works, because the public and a lot of people don't understand, if our Caribou truck gets a call, say in Landarch, and that truck goes to Tallahassee, from the time 911 is called until we get back available, it's roughly four hours. So that's four hours that zone don't have a vehicle, so you have one of the other trucks responding to it. And then if the East Point truck gets a call at the same time, which happens really often in the summertime, we try to move trucks when we can to the center of the county, but it don't work out all the time. So that does increase our call volume because if we go, say, if we have an Appalachia truck responding to the plantation on the island, that's a long haul. So that increases our numbers. And there's multiple times, especially in the summertime, where we have all three trucks in Tallahassee at the same time. And this has happened this week. This has happened five or six times so far. So that's something we handle, and that's why we have such a good relationship with the Gulf and Wakulla County.
Louis, what does that second number represent underneath the 10 minutes and 28 seconds? What's the 20 minutes?
Ninetieth percentile response time, so that's the worst 10%. So if you look down, it breaks it down for per minutes.
Okay. Okay, I see that.
Yeah. So if you come down to the 20 minutes, and that's showing like we had a lot of calls. Anything more than seven minutes is usually a truck going, they either cannot find an address or they're going from another zone, like from East Point to Caribou or East Point or Caribou to East Point, something like that. And the ones you see below it, 30 minutes to 59 minutes, that is normally our average response time right now. If I'm not mistaken, I'd have to look it up to get the exact number. But is if the Caribou truck is in station to Alligator Point, it's roughly 20 minutes, maybe 20 to 22 minutes. There's been several times, and the reason I'm showing this is there was a complaint recently about us taking close to an hour to respond. It was the Appalachia Cola truck was coming back in the county from Panama City, and they had to respond to Alligator Point. So that's a really long way to go. Luckily, everything worked out with the patient, so we haven't had any issues like that so far. But all it's going to take is one bad call where that happens. So.
Mr. Chairman? A couple of questions. First, for the public, this new information that has been handed to the board, I'll have it on the agenda for you guys when the meeting is over. I'll upload it. There'll be a link. You can click and download and compare it to for what was there. My next question is, Louis, so is it normal that a patient could tell EMS what hospital they want to go to?
So the way we do is, the way we work this is we take their patients, their wants into consideration. But if they are demanding, and this has happened multiple times in the past, they are in an active heart attack or they have a, their leg is completely broken, and they're demanding to go to the Weems or Sacred Heart, we can't do that. So we have to take them to the law states, the most appropriate facility.
That's what I thought.
But if they're wanting to go to a certain hospital over another one, and it is appropriate facility, and that facility is not a lot further away, then we'll accommodate the best we can. But for example, if you're in Caribou and you're having a heart attack and you're demanding to go to Panama City, we're probably not going to do that because Tallahassee is roughly 20, 30 miles closer, depending on where you are in the county. So we have to take you to the most appropriate, but we do try our best to take the patient's wants into consideration.
And would you explain from your first comment, from your first statement, what the windsock, what that does, how that helps Landarch Village?
So I think we got somebody here that's more of an expert than me. But it does, they like the windsock because it shows, they can look at it and how it's extended and tell the wind speed when they land. And if they don't have one, which in a lot of places where we land them, they don't, if they have a pretty severe crosswind, it can affect their landing.
I'm sorry, that was my point. I wanted for them to understand that helps
Yes.
the helicopter, you know, that might be providing that service, it makes it safer for them to land. And that's that, that's what I wanted to say. Okay.
That's the reason why, Michael, about when I first came on, I saw the windsock not out there at Landarch.
That's the first thing you had done, yes.
That's why I kept on throwing a fit until y'all put one up.
Yes, ma'am.
Because that, I mean, that determines everything.
That's all I got. Any other questions?
I do have a concern I want to share with you.
Yes, sir.
Not so much, maybe you can help us figure out how to get it done. So I've talked with the Fire Chief from the East Point Fire Department, Mr. George Flut. What we have for lifelike in East Point works at best. But I want to find out, from what I've looked at, I think it can work. Where the county owns property where our TDC visitor center is?
Yes.
In that U-shaped drive? I want to see if it's possible for us to put a landing spot there for lifelike because it's more accessible. I've been told that the last couple of times, we're good that the school lets us use the field by the Sheriff's Department, but it's not exactly used all the time. So it was the last time they were trying to lifelike somebody, and they're having problems actually in the mud and trying to get them on the helicopter. So, you know, in those instances of time where lifelike's been called, time is more precious than anything. So whatever we have to do as a board to be able to do that, I want you to try to help us and bring back to us, first off, if it'll work, because I know there's different regulations for the size and the diameter concerned what it's going to be used for. So it might not be feasible to do that, but you know, we need somebody other than us making that determination.
I'll contact Survival Flight and Shands. They're the ones that respond to us the most, and they'll send out people and we can visit and see what need to be done.
Yeah. Well, if we can put together some of that visit so we can get to a place of, you know, tech action on that, that would be great.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, to elaborate on that, I did have Mr. Howard at one point, I got a complaint. He took some road material out there and tried to fix that road to where they could get the fire trucks. But it is, I agree with you, we need to come up with a definitive plan for a better plan, better use, so that we can get people out lifelighted if they need to. But I do have another question for you. You said that, I know we've got, is it two new ambulances that we just got in and outfitted?
They will be in sometime in September.
Okay, but we just got some new ones, didn't we?
Yeah, we got a new ambulance. It was, it's got 11,000 miles on it, so it was a few months ago. And then we got another quick response vehicle that we're going to start trying to use in the near future as a community paramedic vehicle, a dedicated one.
And then we'll have two more coming in September outfitted? Okay. So that'll give us basically four. All of them, what's your oldest, how many miles is your, I'm sorry, your newest, minus the ones that you just got new in your fleet?
So we have a 2009, we got two 2019s. They are both, I'd have to look to be exact, I want to guess here, but I know they're over 150,000 miles. And then two of our other primary trucks are a 2015 and 16, and they're both pushing 300,000.
So getting this, these in September will outfit you guys fairly well with accommodating the services for the county and emergency services. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Lewis?
I just appreciate what they did.
Yes, ma'am. It is, and I got to say, in my several years of doing this, I think this will be probably the newest fleet we've ever had. At the end of the day, that matters. Because when you're traveling and you're going to pick up someone's loved one or the person and get them to appropriate medical help, yeah, we need to make sure we're doing the best we can with that. So thank you for that.
You're welcome. And it's important because our roads are still pretty rough, and when we're having to respond somewhere, we're driving fast. So it does do a lot of wear and tear to the trucks.
Yeah. Well, I know it should have been done probably a long time ago, but it's on the DRT's radar. They've moved the landing date again, but they are, they do have it on their work plan to do significant chunks of Highway 98 through Franklin County, pretty much from one side to the other when they get through. So, you know, that's something that's going to be very valuable to all of us.
And Mr. Chairman, you, one more thing, the ambulances that we did get, you worked, you worked really hard and diligent in getting grants and other funding for that so that it wouldn't come out of our taxpayers' pockets. And for that, I thank you.
You're welcome. We try our best. I know the county paid for one a couple of years ago, but we try our best to do grants as much as we can.
Thank you, Louis.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before you go to planning the zoning to allow Courtney to time to set up, can we do item four? My report is on page 16. And I do that because I see Mr. Ben Chandler out in the audience. I don't know why I put Ben Harper in my narrative.
Changing his name.
Yeah. Hopefully, Mr. Ben Harper has more money than Mr. Chandler does, so he can get him some. But anyway, I would like to address this to allow him to address the board on this, and then he can travel back to Tallahassee, you know, the ERPC. August 1st, meeting the board authorized staff to advertise for vacant advisory board seats. Before I was able to send the ad to the newspaper, both Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Amerson, they had some ads to fill for two other advisory board, they had vacant seats. One being the Airport Operational Economic Development Board. That, that's the alternate, correct, Commissioner Amerson? That's the alternate seat?
Yes.
Yes, that one. And the other is a new group, the regional, and I think it's some of what the chairman was just referring to, the Regional Rural Transportation Plan Technical Advisory Committee. Mr. Ben is here from the ERPC this morning to give a summary of this committee's mission and answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Chandler? Good morning.
Good morning. Ben Chandler, Appalachia Regional Planning Council. You may recall, a couple of months ago, I was here to give a brief introduction of this program that we're going to be working on together with FDOT District 3. And this is the development of a regional rural transportation plan. And it's to cover the five rural counties in the Appalachia region that are not currently under the umbrella of the Capital Region Transportation Planning Agency. And this is a, this is a two-year program to establish this plan. This is a carryover of a pilot program that has been conducted over in the Emerald Coast region to our west. Once this plan is completed, it'll give District 3 full, long-range transportation planning coverage. And this will be a 20-year horizon plan, updated annually as we go. But to get it started, we need to have a foundation for it. So part of what we're coming back today to talk about, and we were talking to staff earlier in the week about, is the establishment of the technical advisory committee for developing this plan. And the advisory committee will be made up of three members from each of the five. And the advisory committee will be made up of three members from each of the five counties. Two appointees from the county, and then one appointee from our Appalachia Regional Planning Council Board. So, that will provide a total of fifteen seats for that committee. And basically, what they will do is, once the projects, the regional products have been identified through public involvement workshops over these next couple of years, that that committee will then rank those projects according to criteria based on what type of project it is. So, they'll be categorized, find, you will look to see what the best funding sources are for them that FDOT has available or other funding sources to seek out. But the idea is that committee will be the final say in delivering a recommendation for what the order of those priorities are on a regional basis. So, what we're asking at this point is for the, each county, in Franklin County in this case, to consider who you would want to appoint to that board, how you want to go about doing that, and we, as the council, can help that process along. Different counties are doing it different. Some have appointed one of their elected officials as part of that. They've appointed their county engineer, be it someone on staff or a general consultant that serves that role. So, there's a number of options on how to go about doing that. But it's really, that's up to the county how you want to do it, and we can certainly work with you on that process. But we want to be able to establish this within the next couple of months so we can have a kickoff meeting with that group to get the ball really rolling before we begin the workshops.
So, Mr. Ben, looking at that, that's, thank you for being here today, number one. That's why I talked with Mr. Malone about it. Looking at the makeup of the group and how different counties are approaching it, I mean, it's up to this board, but I'm fine with it being, at least one member's being one of the commissioners. But as far as the at-large or the second one, that's one of the reasons I wanted you to be here today, because I really think it would behoove us as a board to try to get someone from our community. We have a lot of people, have a lot of knowledge about things like this, that if they would be willing to volunteer their time, that might could help move the needle, that either have worked in infrastructure before, worked with the state, or been involved with any kind of planning with that kind of stuff. I mean, I just, you know, we need to make sure we have as much involvement as possible. So, the last thing I want us to do is to have all these be, you know, like from all government. I just think it'd be better to have some citizen involvement.
Mr. Chairman, too, I try to emphasize to our community and our citizens that, you know, back in the day, when we all grew up around here, this county was unknown, it was forgotten, and now we're not. So, now we're having an influx of people retiring to our communities to live and visitors alike, and now they don't understand why we don't have the infrastructure, because we never had to have it before, and here we are caught needing it now, and trying to get it done is just gonna take time. Now, speaking of this, this, this meet, is there gonna be meetings? So, in other words, like, how often would you guys be meeting? Do you happen to know that?
We've laid out a public involvement plan that's under review right now by the district. And what I've proposed at this point is that there would be four defined meetings across this two-year period. The first one would be more of a kickoff to really get an understanding of where we're headed with all of this and what that process is, where we'll be going. And perhaps talking about the evaluation criteria that we'd be using to evaluate projects. The second meeting would be to start to take a look at the products that are coming in from workshops that we're getting the input. And then the third would be a time to actually be ranking these products once, hopefully, we have them all in, and the committee can rank them then. And the fourth would be a presentation of that final plan and that ranking order for them to approve. And now, it can be up to that committee, that committee will elect a chair, and they will, by majority vote, they can call another meeting if they want. And or if the council, planning council sees fit that we're in a spot where another meeting would be warranted, we can call it as well. But my idea is that it would be kind of a semi-annual type thing, maybe for a short period, a quarterly basis. But the intent is the actual workshops that are done on, by public outreach, that that would garner everybody coming to give an input. This committee would just represent what each county is wanting to have in there.
And just so that the community knows, so that the citizens that may want to be on this board, the meetings will be located where?
Well, the county meetings, we'll have them in a convenient place, convenient time.
Here locally?
Here locally.
They won't have to travel?
Right. The technical advisory committee, what we'll try to do is set those up in a centralized location in the five county region to make it accessible. And that, we may float those around, you know, a little bit, too. We'll just kind of see what the pleasure of that committee wants to do, really.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Just trying to get somebody, more knowledge is power, and I'm the type of person, I want to know what I'm getting myself into for a volunteer for something, so.
Sure.
I just wanted to clarify that for the public. Thank you.
Sure, yes, ma'am.
And to further elaborate on that, to make sure everybody is aware of the five counties we're talking about, is Franklin, Gulf, Liberty, Calhoun, and Jackson.
That's correct.
Correct.
That's correct.
All right, so do we need to take action today as far as who we want to nominate on this committee? Or how we want to go about it?
With this information, I kind of wanted you to look out to your constituents and see who you think can.
Okay.
Maybe bring some, I'll put in my next report and bring some nominations, some nominees, people that like appointing to this board.
Okay, so are we wanting to, just asking, are we wanting to add it to the ones that we're advertising?
Yes, so, if you're finished with Mr. Chandler, that, there's a little bit more I wanted to address us.
I don't know that we are or not. Does anyone have any other questions for Mr. Chandler? I wasn't trying to do that, I was just.
I'm fine, sir.
Trying to move in the direction. Thank you, Ben, we appreciate your time.
Sure, yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, to continue, Commissioners, I posted as vacancies at the county's website, and I have a link there for everybody, without any end date. I recommend that we wait to see the results from this county, the polls on the county's website before sending an ad to the newspaper. Actually, Commissioner Amerson, I actually already got a response for the airport ad. Someone sent me an email interested in doing that. So, we gave it maybe, I don't know, till the next meeting. I could report to you guys how many responses I've got for all four vacancies, and then you could tell me, okay, Michael, go ahead and send it to the paper, or let's just leave it a little bit longer in the web, the website is free. Say that, you know, but I know we need exposure sometimes to get it out there, too, so. But you guys also do a good job, the few of you that use, the couple of you that use social media a lot, you guys do a very good job of reposting stuff and getting it out there, too. So, take advantage of that. And that's it, Commissioner, I didn't know if you guys had any action on that particular item right now? If you're comfortable with me leaving it on the website for now until next meeting, we talk about it again?
I'm comfortable discussing next meeting, that way we can have time to gather our thoughts and what we want to do.
God bless you. All right.
So, do we need to take a recess before we go to planning and zoning?
Courtney, you ready?
Ready. Please proceed.
Bless you.
Excuse me. God bless you.
Did you clean your coffee?
Lord, you're zoning, I guess.
It's these books over here.
So, the first item I have is a variance for four fifty-four US Highway ninety-eight, consideration for a request to, for a variance to build seven feet in a VE thirteen flood zone as allowed through variance in C-one Commercial Fishing District for seafood distribution building at the property located four five four US Highway ninety-eight, Appalachia Cola. Request submitted by Clay Murphy, agent for Sean Moore and Alexis Coombs applicants. The board did motion to approve, and there was no one opposed to it. The county planner is who met with Sean Moore and Alexis Coombs about this property, and the first time the county approved one like this was back in nineteen eighty-eight.
Any questions from the board?
Ms. Bankston, since this has to do with our floodplain administrate, or our floodplain, you said Mr. Curran's a killer, what about our floodplain administrator?
Yes.
Okay.
So, she's, yeah.
I should have called yesterday to ask for her. Yeah.
So, this one falls under what's called functionally dependent, so it can't function without being in that location, or somewhere, a similar location. So, that basically gives it the ability to get a variance from the floodplain rules in some, in some ways.
Thank you, Angela.
And this is for seafood distribution?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Pleasure of the board?
So moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Anderson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? What's your names? Are you opposed? We have one opposed, Commissioner Sanders opposed. So, it's a three-one vote. Please proceed, Ms. Courtney.
Okay. Next, we have a dock for, under consideration for a nine hundred and ninety-two square foot single-family dock that consists of, I don't know if you guys wanted to.
You want to do like a last night, where she goes through?
Yeah, that's, so, does the board want to do all these in one motion? Or you want to do them separately, or do you want to pull out and discuss before we vote on?
Oh, I'll pull out the twenty-eight twelve US Highway ninety-eight, just for clarification.
So, if you would, Ms. Courtney, read items A and B, and we'll.
Okay. So, A is a nine hundred and ninety-two square foot single-family dock that consists of a four-by-two-hundred-and-eight access walkway and a ten-by-sixteen terminal platform located at one thirty-one North Bay Shore Drive in East Point. Request submitted by Garlic Environmental Associates, agent for Cindy and Rex Whiteman applicants. This will be contingent on DEP and core permits. B is two-seven-seven-four Highway ninety-eight East. It's a three thousand one hundred and seventy-two square foot single-family dock. It's got a four-by-five-hundred-and-sixty-five boardwalk, twelve-by-twenty terminus, a twelve-by-twenty-four covered boat slip with a lift, and a twelve-by-thirty-two covered boat slip with a lift located in Lanart Village. That was submitted by Erin Sarchet, agent for Tanya Tanner, and that one will also be continued upon state and federal permits.
And, Ms. Courtney, how did these go in the planning and zoning?
Those were unanimous, and they all approved, they approved those.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Pleasure of the board?
So moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward. Second by Commissioner Amerson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous. All right, go to item C, please.
All right, so item C is consideration of request for a single-family dock that consists of, oh, let me pull this up on here, so y'all can see it, sorry. Four-by-two-hundred-and-fifty walkway, a ten-by-twelve midpoint turnaround, a twelve-by-twelve jet ski lift, a twelve-by-thirty-six boat slip with a lift, a fourteen-by-thirty-six covered boat slip with a lift, and a thirteen-by-sixteen covered area on a nineteen-by-thirty-six deck located at two-eight-one-two Highway ninety-eight East, Lanart Village, submitted by Erin Sarchet, agent for Weeks Investment Properties. This is also contingent upon state and federal permits. I did a little research on this one because of the difference on the repairing rights on one side and on the other side. And according to DEP, the application for dock in pure must contain a survey prepared by a professional surveyor, which indicates a repairing rights unless the dock is built at least twenty-five feet from existing property lines. The staff didn't have any opposition to the request. And I think they did turn in, or they just have to turn in an updated survey that shows how far they're, if they're meeting those setbacks.
Repairing right lines, okay. And, Ms. Courtney, is it, was the request submitted by docks for less or somebody else?
It's Erin Sarchet. The docks for less was, so they had, the applicant had gave it to docks for less. They were the agent, and then so much time went by, and they changed agents, is what happened.
Mr. Chairman, I know we had some concern in the public comments portion about this. Courtney, just so the public's aware, when people apply or ask for these boat slips, boat lifts, there's no ordinance or requirement that state that there has to be, I know a lot of our ordinance state that we can't have a secondary structure, or secondary structure without primary structure, but that does not count with the docks, correct?
No, so, in order for them to, for us to give approval for them to build a dock, they have to show that they have buildable space on the actual property. But they, we don't have any rule that states that they can't build a dock before they build a house.
And we can't speculate if they're gonna put RVs or anything like that. We cannot not allow this, because they could come back and put us in a lawsuit with the county, basically saying we're not allowing them to do what they are legally bound to do with the land, because we don't have an ordinance stating otherwise.
Correct, yeah, we can't speculate what somebody's gonna do with their property. You know, they brought before us a dock, so that's all that we can assume that they're putting on it right now.
And just so we know, P and Z approved this without any?
Contingent upon state and federal permits and an updated survey to show all the setbacks.
Okay.
To verify the setbacks.
Thank you.
Well, you don't have any rules or ordinances or anything pertaining to boat lifts and stuff like that? You do have on your docks. I mean, you have certain things that you can do and can't do on your docks. Because I know, unless it's been changed, you're supposed to have it enough to where somebody can go up underneath there if they want to flounder or something. Because that was our big problem at the starting of all these docks being built on the bay out there. We were concerned, the board was concerned at that time, that the traditional uses of, you know, floundering and casting and mullet net and everything was not gonna be able to be done, so that's the reason why we did that. Although she's right, we don't have boat lifts and.
Yeah.
And that, with that. But, you know, thirty-one hundred feet, that's a long way down.
Yeah, and this little border here, if you see on the very end, they can't go past that little line right here.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah.
So, I think, Ms. Courtney, where the biggest concerns come in is when you start, and y'all are right, we don't have anything against it currently. But when you start allowing boat lifts, well, they have to be powered. And to have power, they have to have a power pole. But none of that should be allowed to be hooked to for an RV or any other secondary structure without a primary.
Correct.
So, those are one of the things we're trying to get along, because that's, that's, because for good or for different, several years back, since I've been on the board, people used to be able to go and get a temporary power pole. And the county really had no say-so to stop it, well, we changed that. Now, Duke Energy's not supposed to be doing that. There have been some that have slipped through, and trust me, we've had discussions about it. We've had discussions with Duke Energy about it. But I think that's what causes the biggest concern, when people see stuff with boat lifts, they want to make sure that the county's gonna do their best to, you know, not let it be the wild, wild west anymore. That's the best way I'd ever say it. I'm just saying what some people are probably thinking, that's all I was doing. Any more questions or concerns, or?
There's no setting on there, right?
Pleasure of the board? Motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have a second by Commissioner Ward? Do we have any discussion on this motion before we vote? All in favor? All opposed? Have one opposed, Commissioner Amerson's opposed. All right, please proceed, Ms. Courtney. Commercial site plan applications?
Yes.
And before you begin, I'm sorry, we do have two. Does the board want to consider these together or separate?
You actually have three, this is the one I added, this one.
Okay. Do you want to consider these together or separate? Or do you want to pull some to talk about, how do you want to do it? So, we're doing them all together, go ahead.
Okay. So, the first one is the four-five-four US Highway ninety-eight, the one that you saw for the variance. They have to also come for a commercial site plan review. So, they did a two hundred, two thousand eight hundred square foot seafood distribution and ice production vessel building located at four-five-four US Highway ninety-eight. And this was also submitted by Clay Murphy, agent for Sean Moore and Alexis Coombs. Four parking spaces proposed. This property is zone C-one Commercial Fishing. This was reviewed by a county planner, and he has no objection to the site plan, and staff has no objection to the site. and staff has no objection to the site plan. This was a motion to approve with no one opposed. The next one is one five three, Highway ninety-eight. This is a consideration for commercial site plan review for storage shed sales business. They had to come back before the board with the stormwater site plan, so they have now met all of the requirements for planning and zoning and to move forward with their commercial site plan review. Almost, they motioned to approve with none opposed. Then the last one is one five eight two, Highway ninety-eight. This is for a consideration of request for a commercial site plan review for an eight by twenty-four ice machine. And Carabelle, her request was submitted by Jackie Etheridge, Agent for Naomi Hope, who's the applicant. She has four parking spaces proposed. This property is Zoned C4. County staff has no objection to the proposed stormwater pond or to this request. There, there was a question about, on this one, having to elevate the ice machine because it's in a VE flood zone. So I brought Angela in to kind of just discuss that so that there's clarification.
Before we do that, Ms. Angela, Ms. Courtney, are items B and C identical, just different locations?
No, Commissioner, I just realized what I did. I used the, the request from item C and I put it in B.
Okay, let's back up to B and read that again then, please.
Back up to B?
Yeah, because it's different what I'm looking at.
Okay.
Yeah, so, use your, if you use the online agenda versus what's on paper, it, it's, you know, it'll work. But yes, I'm sorry, yes.
No online...
I'm sorry, the online...
What I'm looking at's the same.
Okay.
Please read B again.
Okay. B is consideration of a request for a commercial site plan review for storage, storage shed sales business located at one fifty-three, Highway ninety-eight East Point. Request was submitted by Brian Emel Siska, applicant.
Okay. This was something that was tabled?
Correct.
By P and Z? Did they come back and meet all the different things that they were asked for by P and Z? Because there were many things to consider. Number one, have they turned in how many storage sheds possibly they're gonna have on the property at any one time?
What they did on the site plan was maxed out, basically, the max of what they would have on their property.
And, and they're still gonna be able to meet their stormwater requirements?
Correct, yes.
Okay? That's what I was asking. All right, go ahead, Ms. Angela.
Okay, so what was the property address on, on the one?
Fifteen eighty-two, Highway ninety-eight.
Okay. So pertaining to that one, there was some conversation that came up in the P and Z meeting about it being in a velocity zone. There was one of the P and Z board members that felt like it didn't have to be elevated because it's not habitable space. They, I, they kind, I guess they misunderstand the, the requirement there. That's not the only limitation in a velocity zone, although it is one of them. So anything below base flood elevation in a velocity zone has to be constructed to break away standards. And, and then all machinery and everything has to be elevated. So I, I did reach out to FEMA on this one because I haven't faced anything that, that was this. It's kind of unique. And they said, no, don't do it. So I just got to thinking about it, and, you know, we have the park models that go, that we have in some of the RV slips and, and the lots in East Point and so on. And we've talked about portable restrooms at some of our parks, maybe. So that got me to thinking, well, if there was a way to make it portable, then maybe there would be a way to allow it. So that was kind of the compromise. So as long as they can make it with quick disconnects for the sewer, the power, water connections, and, or not sewer, but water and, and power, and keep it, keep the trailer legal, road-ready at all times, then flood-wise, I don't see why we would say no.
And the applicant knows that?
Yes, sir. I think that makes it comparable to the park models, but, you know.
Anyone have any questions from Ms. Angela before she's there? Thank you. All right? Any more discussion or questions on any of these items? Pleasure of the board?
Sir, move.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Amerson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
The only other thing I had for the board was field dirt and stormwater. At one of our P and Z board meetings, meetings a few months ago, the board discussed residential field dirt, stormwater regulations. This is continuing to be an issue, and staff would like board direction on a possible solution.
Mr. Chairman, I was gonna say, it's obviously like the RV ordinance and stuff, we need to really get going on and working on. I know we could workshop things to death around here, we're not permitted to do that, but we have not had a workshop about field dirt or anything like that. So maybe we should do a workshop first and then get the input from the community and citizens and see what their thoughts are.
Yes, especially since our workshops are now into evenings.
Yep.
Yeah.
They have opportunity to attend and be more vocal.
Yes. I will say, I'm sorry, I'm trying to catch you off, Commissioner. Yes, we need to do something about field, and it's not so much of... Well, let me just give everybody an example. So I was talking the other day with county staff about an individual in my district that wanted to build and, and do something, they're having to build up off the ground, and they're wanting to attach something underneath, like a lot of other people do. And they told him, no, because they're, they're elevation. Well, they've since went in and put five feet of field. Another come back and think, we're gonna tell them, yes, because the elevation's there. Five feet on any one piece of property? And I'm talking about, I'm talking about five dump truck loads. I'm talking about sixty inches. Exactly. So as we're talking about it, I'll just go ahead and queue it up because we'll, we'll need, this will be an item to discuss. We're not gonna do anything with field, we need to do something with residential requirements for stormwater. So I just want to go ahead and queue that while we're talking.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
We had the, I'm gonna talk about it in the old days. In the old days, you couldn't put nothing on that land that was gonna run the water to somebody else's land. And now that is being done all over this county. You're going into it, where you've got low area, it's buildable now because they put, like you said, about six feet of dirt in there. But they don't understand the impact that they are making on those natural drains in this county. Those natural drains, if you leave them alone and they don't flood, it'll take care of itself. But when you go in and try to alter it, you're gonna mess up the whole ecosystem of the county. I'm telling you. And, you know, that's its fact. So we need to have that meeting and, and get the people's opinion on that because I think there's a lot more people in here that is concerned about it, too.
Yes. So we don't need to do that by motion, do we?
Yes, sir. If we, we're going to hold a workshop, which should be by official action of the board.
So first, I guess we need to ask for, if anybody wants to comment on this, because this was not on our agenda.
Correct, I don't see it on the agenda either.
Right. Is anyone in the room? Yes, sir.
Paul Rigemeyer. I've been beating this drum for a while. We have got to do something about this willy-nilly field coming everywhere. It's happening, you know, right next door to me, not an issue. Talked to the owner, we're gonna do some stuff, and that's fine. But that's just a reasonable guy. He doesn't have to do it. So please, please, set the workshop sooner than later. Let's get this ball rolling. We, we need to do something. I agree totally with Commissioner Sanders that, you know, leave the low spots. And I've mentioned this to a couple of commissioners, I think. At one time, we had a county engineer, Dan Rothwell. And he wrote a cut-and-fill ordinance. And I don't know whatever happened to it. It didn't go anywhere, but it might be in Mark's drawer in there and might be worth taking a look at. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Before we take action on this item? Mr. Rollins, you asked about it, was it?
Yep, you have one, sir. Mr. John Berry.
All right.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Morning.
Mr. Chairman. I'd like to flip that coin also. I'd like to say, what about if you take your property and cut it down from a X-zone to a lower zone? And how that affects the, will that be addressed at this workshop also?
Well, workshops can be wide open, sir, so yes, we can discuss it. It's not a problem.
Because that does affect, if not mistaken, and I, I could stand back that, that does affect the floodplain situation in all of Franklin County. If you cut from one, cut one X-zone down to a lower zone elevation, it affects all of our insurance. So I'll, I'll bring that up at that meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. All right, pleasure of the board?
Sir, move.
Second.
So we have a motion to approve, setting a date and time for a workshop by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders, to talk about a field ordinance and, and other issues pertaining to it. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
Is it all? Yeah. I forgot to mention one thing on my report, on the zoning, P and Z. Should I share screen again, Michael?
For the Island View?
Yeah.
It's on the agenda deal.
Yeah. We discussed the Island View Park grant at the meeting so that the mark could get some, we can get points for the grant. So we discussed the site plan for proposed improvements to the Island View Park. The new items were shown in red with the, to include a picnic pavilion, fielded playground, canoe kayak launch, dog run, and restrooms. So P and Z did discussions, discussed the improvements and have no objections. Board members only made, you know, suggestions for elevated restrooms. That could, you know, better withstand storm conditions than last time.
Another option for that, I don't know how it works, but another option for that would be similar to the restrooms that they have, that the state has. Over the Ridge Park, over on, on the Cape. They actually have restrooms that are like trailers, but they're solid metal. So they're movable, they have the quick disconnect deal, and you don't have five hundred feet of decking to try to meet the ADA compliance. It's literally six inches off the ground. Just, you know, just a thought.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I comment on this? I was at that meeting because I was interested in what the public wanted. And we were just discussing the bathroom. And it's gonna probably be a good possibility we're gonna have city water and sewer. And so if you have that, you have the portable bathrooms, what I call the portable bathroom. They're made, you know, on a trailer, like you said, it brought in. You can disconnect real fast when you have a storm coming in and move it and then put it right back in there. Because most of the time, that's what keeps us from opening up a lot of our parks. But with that, that you've got there. Also, there's another thing here. Is the kayak launch, in the old plans, that kayak launch was out there. And the, Mr. Julian asked if we could have another one there. I said, that was a good idea. But I was wondering, is there something that we can do in the meantime? Because a lot of people use it, maybe instruct the road department to put down some rock or something that they can launch their kayaks out of there? Because it's real...
I, I would defer to the engineer first to make sure that we don't, we don't have the state looking at us trying to, you know...
Let's bring that to the engineer's attention and let him go and look. And if there's something we can go in the meantime before we get this real good kayak launch, see what we can do to get it open and using it.
And one thing, too, Commissioner, I've been meaning to circle back with you. The, the quote that we received from Jason White Construction for the three-slat fence, were you okay with that design or did you not like the look?
Well, we're gonna put it out for bids and let some of our fence companies here in this county take.
Well, it was actually below the ten thousand dollar threshold.
Oh, it's below?
Yep, so we don't necessarily have to, so...
We're gonna paint, we're gonna paint it?
It would probably remain the pressure-treated color. I mean, if, if we would like to, we could always paint it afterwards with utilizing Parks and Rec staff or inmate labor or...
I could paint, I can, I can paint.
I mean, unless there's a different design out there that you...
It's not what we had up there. No. It was not what we had up there to start with.
I can't remember what it looked like to start with.
It wasn't that.
Okay, okay.
That's what I was saying.
Okay, gotcha.
But I mean, you always deferring to me, to keep it down and I, because I want that chain link fence down.
Okay.
Because it makes you look like you're not asking and inviting the public into it. Let's go ahead and, can we do a motion now, Mr. Chairman, on that since she's...
I think it's on her.
Yeah, actually, back at the last meeting, yeah, when you had to leave early, it actually came up and the motion was already made, but it was contingent upon you, your approval, so...
We'll discuss that during your report.
Okay. And actually, I was gonna go ahead and do item number three if I could.
All right, go ahead.
Yeah, Mark Currenton held an advertising meeting several weeks ago and received public input for proposed improvements at Island View Park for the development of a FERDAF grant application. The park enhancements in the grant application package include the addition of a picnic pavilion with an adjacent portable ADA restroom trailer, a small playground, a fenced dog park area, and a kayak launch. Board action to approve the attached resolution authorizing Mark Currenton to submit a FERDAF grant application on behalf of the board for improvements at Island View Park.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders? Second by Commissioner Amerson? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
And, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Sanders, you just don't want to go ahead and talk about the fence right now?
You can go ahead and do it, let's get it out of the way.
Okay, okay.
Then we'll have Island View all knocked out.
So we can just take down the chain link, you're good with that?
Yeah, and put something up there.
So I want to ask a question before we leave Island View. Commissioner Sanders, are we gonna do another ribbon cutting or...
It's out, it, it was up to the guy.
Yes, actually, we waited until these, because she, she, the fence, we really wanted the fence to change before we did the ribbon cutting because, you know, she was not pleased with the fence at all. And not, not just, Commissioner, I'm not taking anything away from you, but some of the public, too, also, they called us and they, they weren't comfortable with the fence. So we wanted to change that and get Commissioner Sanders' blessing of what type of fence to put up there before we did the ribbon cutting.
And I rode by there Sunday, it looks like a prison.
That's what I said.
Yeah, so let's change, move the fence and then we'll, we'll do the ribbon cutting.
Well, the only, the reason I wanted to ask is because at the last fact meeting I was at, I ran into Mr. Dove, is that his name?
Hey.
Doug. Helped get the money the first time.
Dan Haddaway.
Yeah, he said, we better make sure he gets an invitation. That's the only reason I'm bringing it up, man.
We will.
He wants to be there, he helped us get the money to get it.
So do you need a motion of, so where are we with the fence? You need a motion now?
We are good because that was actually covered on the August first.
That's the last meeting, I'm sorry, August first. We just needed Commissioner Sanders' blessing, okay.
Did you see a picture of it, Mr. Sanders? Did you see a picture of the fence?
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess we'll go ahead. I, I just wanna, I want that fence.
Okay.
Because I don't like the, I just don't like the chain link fence around it. Makes it feel like the people aren't welcome there.
It's carryover from the construction side.
So before we do this, we're done with planning zone, correct?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I got something for Courtney real quick. Speaking of, I was really torn with the twenty-eight, twelve about the dock. I don't know, maybe moving forward, because I, I see the concern that the public had about a power pole being there and maybe taking advantage of that. Of course, again, we can't be speculative about what the person's gonna do. We might need, moving forward, do something if they're asking for a power dock, get some kind of ordinance or some kind of something that states, or send a letter to let them know that we don't allow RVs, you're not allowed to hook this RV to the power pole. People that aren't from here may not know what our ordinance is, our current ordinance. I know we're working on a new ordinance, but just moving forward, I think that's something we might need to look at. Because I could, I can see people taking advantage of that. That's just my thought.
Commissioner, the issue is, some people, if there's not a definite no, everything's a yes. That's the problem. So anyway, let's take a five-minute recess before we do this bit. So anyway, let's take a five-minute recess before we do this bit.
Franklin County Board of County Commissioners now back in session. Next item on our agenda is a bid opening. Ms. Griffin, please proceed.
For Bruman Park, E. Hall.
It says metal roof over batting cages.
Okay, okay, yep, here we go. Okay, this is to install a metal roof over the batting cage at Bruman Park. This is actually part of the D E O Hurricane Michael Assistance Grant project. And right now, we have received one bid, and that is from B G N Contractors in Panama City, Florida. The bid total is thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and one dollars and eighty-eight cents. Thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and one dollars and eighty-eight cents. This was actually more than what I had originally estimated for the grant project, so if we could just, at this point, we'll just, we may need to reject. But we will come back at the next meeting and-
How do you confirm?
Review Committee.
I mean, it could be myself, Mark, and Michael.
Okay.
But I will say it was over the budgeted line item, so, and unfortunately, that's the only bid that was received.
Okay, so the motion is to, you're requesting a motion to refer this to the Review Committee consisting of Erin Griffin, Michael Morone, and Mark Carrington.
That's what you said.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, although I hate to do it because I want to get moving on this, I mean, we have to do what's best, you know, with the money. We don't have the money, we don't have the money, so I'll reject.
Motion to not approve.
I'm sorry, you wanted to reject a bid, send to Review Committee first, then reject?
I mean, it's definite that we will have to reject because it is more than the budgeted line item. Okay.
Yeah, I don't want to waste this, I don't want to waste time on this.
We'll go ahead and go out for bid again, and try to draw up some more interest from some of the metal roofing suppliers.
So we have a motion on the table to reject this bid by Commissioner Ward. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Sanders. Any more discussion before we vote?
I just-
Just real quick, sorry, Mr. Chairman, but that's every fence being replaced, even outside perimeter fence as well?
Actually, that was for the metal-
Oh, that's just the batting cage?
Yeah, the metal structure over the batting cage, yep. And I have received actually one quote that was used in developing the budget, and for some reason, that vendor did not submit a bid, so, you know, of course, it was less than twenty-five thousand, but I'm not, I haven't been able to get, you know, three other written quotes, so that's one reason why we're having to go out for bid on this.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I will say that, you know, I've been pushing, pushing, pushing for this all to get done, and here we are. I don't want to waste any more time, but I understand we have to do what we have to do. It's way more, which unfortunately, I think all the bids, with inflation, we might, it's going to be difficult. It's frustrating, but we got to do what we have to do, but I'm hoping that maybe, like you said, reach out to some of our contacts. And I'll call, I'll do whatever I can do to help facilitate this process, so just let me know, and we can get together after meeting or some other time. I want to try to get this as quickly as possible.
One, real quick, have y'all thought about the netting instead of putting chain link up around a batting cage?
It's not chain link, it's a live metal roof. They want it so-
So it's just a-
They want it so if it rains, if it's raining or bad weather, whatever-
Strike everything I said. Because I really weren't.
We are doing the fencing as well.
That's next.
We had to write them up all separately from the funding sources.
Next time, Jim flip it all together.
I'll be sitting here keeping my mouth shut.
I'm sitting here trying to figure out-
Mr. Chairman, and just so you know-
Why that bunch of Kaylee calls that much money?
Commissioner Amerson, we actually did the batting cages. We utilized Mr. Davis's Parks and Rec budget when I first came on the board, that's one of the first things I wanted done, basketball court and the batting cages, and those got done out of his budget. And the batting cages have been refurbished, I just wanted something over them so that people could go out there and practice in inclement weather.
Okay, I thought y'all were putting up the pole barn over there the way that it did over at Kendry's, whatever.
That's kind of what we were doing, it's just it's too much.
I got you, okay.
Well, not just during inclement weather, really, it's after, so if the way that it sits now, when it rains, when you go to it, it's all puddled and different things.
I see if it would have drained properly last year, we would have played over there and I would have seen the back end, so that's huge, right there.
That's true. All right, so any other discussion before we vote on this motion? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous. Please proceed.
Okay, Commissioners, the next bid opening is for replacing the fencing in Fields One and Two. This is actually being funded from our FERDAP project. Now, the replacement of the fencing for Fields One and Two, that will actually occur after the drainage improvements and the field renovation work.
And has that already been awarded?
We are having the mandatory pre-bid onsite today, actually tomorrow at three o'clock. And, you know, as far as interested parties appearing, and then bids will be opened on that the first meeting in September.
So the pre-bid meeting is tomorrow at Bruman Park?
Yep, at three o'clock.
Okay, I'm going to try to make it out there.
And that's going to be done before this is given the bill you go forward?
We will actually award, and most likely, they will go ahead and purchase the materials at that point, but they will not install until, you know, after all of the grading work has been done.
Thank you.
Okay, this first one is from Mr. Fents, and that is from, I don't see their address in here. Oh, okay, six eight zero four Bayou George Road, Panama City, Florida. His bid total for the fencing, Fields One and Two, is seventy thousand, two fifty-five, forty-two, and seventy thousand, two fifty-five, forty-two.
Bond?
Let's see. Yeah, we did not require a bid bond on these. The next one is Bracewell Incorporated from two zero six six seven Northeast Railroad Avenue, Blountstown, Florida. Bid total for Bruman Park fencing, Fields One and Two, thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. Again, thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars.
It's a pretty substantial difference.
Yeah, I could say we could take the chain link fence from Island View Park and save money, but I don't know how that'll work.
Okay, this one is from B and T Fencing, and that is five one five nine Wood Lawn Circle, Tallahassee, Florida. Bruman Park fencing, Fields One and Two, seventy-one thousand, one eighty-nine, forty. Again, seventy-one thousand, one eighty-nine, forty. The next one we have is Howell Fencing. Howell Fencing is from one four one zero Alvarez Drive, Saraland, Alabama. Seventy-two thousand, and seventy-two thousand. This next one is from B G N Contractors, nineteen oh one Northeast Avenue, Panama City, Florida. B G N Contractors, ninety-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars and five cents. Ninety-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars and five cents. That is it for the fencing for Fields One and Two. We would like for the board to make a motion to release to the Review Committee, which would be myself, Michael Morone, and Mark Carrington, just to confirm that everything was included for the low bid.
So move it.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanders. And to reiterate what you just said, Ms. Griffin, so one of the jobs of the Review Committee is to make sure that whoever the lowest bidder is actually met all the criteria of the work to be done.
Correct.
Any more discussion before we vote?
I want to make sure Bracewell's quoting two fields and not one.
Yeah, it did have two separate charges on there, so.
All right, all in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous. Please proceed.
And this next one is the fencing of the Field Three and the T-ball Field, which is being paid for by L A T C F funds. So fencing Three and the T-ball Field. That is from Mr. Fents, six eight zero four Bayou George Road, Panama City. Field Three and the T-ball Field, fifty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars and ninety-two cents. Again, fifty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars and ninety-two cents. Next is Bracewell, two zero six six seven Northeast Railroad Ave, Blountstown, Florida. Twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Next one is, let's see, B and T Fencing from five one five nine Wood Lawn Circle, Tallahassee. Fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and ninety-three cents. Fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and ninety-three cents. This one is Howell Fencing, fourteen ten Alvarez Drive in Saraland, Alabama. Fifty-six thousand, four hundred dollars. Fifty-six thousand, four hundred dollars. Last one, B G N Contractors from nineteen oh one Northeast Avenue, Panama City, Florida. Seventy-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars and ten cents. Seventy-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars and ten cents.
Same, same action turned out to Review Committee?
Yep, same action.
Motion to send it up to the Review Committee.
So we have a motion to do that from Commissioner Sanders, second from Commissioner Amerson. I think it's interesting to note that should it hold true, the low bidder is actually going to do both jobs, proving the next lowest bidder is going to do one. That's kind of interesting. All right, any other discussion before we vote on this? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous. All right, we're done with the bid on this, correct?
That's correct.
All right, that means we're up to you, Ms. Griffin.
Okay.
Please proceed.
Okay, first item on my report, Commissioners, we, at the May sixteenth meeting, the board approved signing the FAA grant application for the next phase of the airport obstruction removal project. This grant award will provide five hundred and twenty-five thousand, which it does include a fifteen percent contingency, which will increase the funding up to six hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, towards the Phase Two clearing of sixty-eight point nine acres for runway fourteen thirty-two. The county has also requested seventy-nine thousand, two hundred dollars from F D O T for the Phase Two of the project. The F D O T grant award agreement should be received within the next month, and at that point, the county can proceed with the contract award to the sole bidder, Collins Land Services, for the base bid and alternates A, C, and E for the project. Board action to approve and authorize the chairman's signature on the FAA grant agreement for the next phase of the airport obstruction removal project.
May I?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners, next item is number two. The Tourist Development Council was awarded a historic preservation grant in the amount of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars for the exhibits needed for the Maritime Museum at Buddy Ward Seaford Landing Park. The grant manager has approved the attached proposed contract with Coastal E Solutions for five thousand dollars for the development and design at the museum's website, with a three-D interactive component as outlined in the grant agreement. Board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached five thousand dollar contract with Coastal E Solutions.
Pleasure of the board.
So move.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward. Second by Commissioner Amerson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners, item three was already addressed earlier in the meeting during the zoning administrator's report for Island View Park. The next item after that is number four. Bids were open and released to the architect for review and recommendation at the last meeting to re-roof the old Caribou Annex location east of Carabelle. Of the bids received, architect Doug Schuler of B F B S Architects has recommended awarding the contract to the lowest bidder, M K M Quality Construction, for thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars for the new twenty-six gauge metal roof and a cost of seven dollars and twenty-five cents per square foot for any necessary replacement of deteriorated roof sheathing. Board action to approve and authorize the chairman's signature on the notice of award and construction contract documents.
May I?
A motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners, next item is number five. That one was, the narrative was pending when my report was initially posted yesterday morning. But we did receive the three quotes in time. After receiving numerous complaints about the rough transition from the newly resurfaced Timber Island Road to the bridge deck, pursuant to the county bid policy for projects anticipated to cost less than twenty-five thousand but more than ten thousand dollars, Commissioner Ward requested quotes from three road paving contractors to mill down the rough transition joints on either end of the bridge and patch the approach areas to alleviate a safety concern. Of the three quotes received, Robertson Roberts, twenty-eight thousand, twenty dollars, Coastline Clearing and Land Development, seventeen thousand, and Jason White Construction, fifteen thousand, five hundred. Jason White Construction was the lowest bid at fifteen thousand, five hundred. The cost of the patchwork will be paid by District Five's paving funds. Board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached quote from Jason White Construction.
So move.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Ward. Second by Commissioner Amerson. Any discussion on this motion before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous.
Okay, next item is number six. The road department received fifty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty cents in proceeds from the county equipment auction held in early June. The road department is requesting to use the proceeds and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars in remaining salary funds towards the purchase of an F three fifty super duty diesel truck for towing tractors. The attached quote is based upon contract pricing of sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty-two cents with the Bradford County Sheriff's Department. The road department does have funds available from a partially vacant position to cover the balance. Board action to approve issuance of a purchase order for the Franklin County Road Department to purchase the twenty-twenty-four F three fifty.
Is this a new vehicle?
It is.
Okay, well, you listed off of specifically Kelly, that's why I was-
Oh, it's actually a contract price that they, Duval Ford, had with the Bradford County Sheriff's Department.
So move.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That's a four-o vote.
Okay, next item was number seven. We already covered that under T V C Director John Solomon's report. Next item, number eight, it's just board information, and although the funding announcement was released in late November, the county has just received the fully executed copy of the C D B G grant agreement. Without that agreement, it has only been possible for the county to hold workshops and approve applicants. Now that the agreement has been signed by D E O, the county can move forward with signing construction contracts and getting homes repaired or replaced. At this time, there are four approved applicants for the program. Although the federal program has strict eligibility guidelines, there is still time for residents to submit an application. And the next item is just miscellaneous project updates. We are still awaiting the design task order for the Landmark Village EMS location. Hope to have that for sure at the first meeting in September. Receiving the final design and permits for the S G I Stormwater Project by the end of this month. The installer will be back onsite to install smaller east side shade structures, slab, and swings in mid-September for the St. George Island Playground. And Mike Cates is meeting onsite tomorrow morning to finish wiring for the Ballard Lights. And Bruman Park, we all- In Bruman Park, we also have the mandatory pre-bid meeting for the field renovation. Again, is tomorrow at three P M. And that's it.
And Ms. Erin, stuff like that is, when it's going to come up to be bid on or discussed, any local people that have put in through our portal we have now, they've been made aware of all that, correct?
They have, it was actually in the bid solicitation documents because it is a mandatory pre-bid, so we want everyone interested in bidding on the project to show up and be there to actually see the site.
Right, okay. Any other questions for Ms. Griffin, or any additional concerns, things she needs to do, tasks, whatever? Just throwing it out there.
Ms. Chairman, I've got a couple of things. The bid policy, where, can anyone go on that online and find that on our website?
I can put that out there.
Okay. So people are aware what we require. And then another thing, the Firdap grant, I think that's awesome for Island View Park. Maybe with the next legislative session, maybe we need to get with our capital solutions lobbyists to start pushing for that up at the, on the state level with our representatives. Because I know that's what, how we got the Bruman Park Firdap grant is, granted, we all went up there and spoke to our legislators about it and pushed, really pushed hard for it. So hoping we can do the same with Island View Park as well.
And we're also looking for energy efficiency funding for the Musco Sports Lighting for D W Wilson as well.
That's all I have. Thanks, Erin.
All right, Mr. Graham.
Sir, from page sixteen. I stated last meeting, county staff, Division of State Fire Marshal's staff to discuss that four hundred fifty thousand dollar legislative appropriation for St. James Landmark Village, a new fire truck for the fire department. Based on information from that meeting, with the assistance of Tracy Busby, your consultant, we solicited and received a four hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred sixty-two dollars, seventy cents proposal, which is attached from ten eight. Ten eight is a fire equipment and a safety company. I think they're based out of Bradenton, Florida, the representative came from Panama City, and they're on the sheriff's cooperative purchasing program. Ten eight consulted with Mr. Robert Amick on the truck and its equipment. And based on their timeline, the truck should be available for delivery in early December. So I just need board action to authorize the chairman to sign that P O for that fire truck. And they'll start, actually, it's on production line, and we should have it here shortly.
May.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders.
I'll second with question.
Second by Commissioner Ward, please proceed.
So this, this truck, is it fully outfitted? Or is, are we going to have to pay an additional fee to outfit it with the hoses and the equipment?
So because we were on there, if you noticed, it was, we got four fifty from the legislature because the, it's four eighteen, and that's what the equipment that Mr. Amick told them to outfit it. Based on what he knows, Landmark Village is in need of. Basically hoses, I won't get technical, but some clamps that, you know, to attach to the fire truck and other things. So yeah, I made sure, because the staff, Fire Marshal staff told us, whatever we get, we have to get now. We can't add to it after you guys sign the P O today. So what you see is what you get, basically. So we tried basing the money we had available to get as much equipment as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
Commissioners, item two, the Innovative and Policy Conference that's going to be held on September thirteenth to fourteenth. I just need board action to approve travel and expenses for the commissioners that are attending.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
I'll second that motion, but I want you to know I'm not going.
Second by Commissioner Sanders, to send everybody else but her.
I ain't going.
Well, I'm going, are you going?
I'm definitely going.
Okay, all right.
I'll let y'all do it.
Well, we'll make sure we're fully vaccinated and take our vitamin C and zinc before we go.
There you go.
You're going to go in white hazmat suits?
I'm not going to be able to go, so y'all be safe.
Odd as you hear.
Be safe, I won't be there.
Any other discussion on this motion before we vote? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
Commissioners, you remember that last marathon meeting, we discussed removing those trees? Commissioner, it was on Franklin Street, did I get that right, or should have been Jefferson?
It was Jefferson.
Jeff, I said Franklin, okay. In East Point, that request was denied from F D O T. They said the trees are new and, in their opinion, loose with the words, that we can do other things to allow anyone trying to get into that intersection. God, I'm trying to make nice words.
Well, how about the one I pointed out with the tractor, trailer hitting the top of their trailer there?
No, we haven't tackled that one, you know, you talk to you about that.
That one needs to come because it's going to be a bad wreck.
What street is that on, Ms. Erin? What street is that?
Ninety-eight.
And what intersection, ninety-eight and?
No, it's right past Puttino Street.
Past Puttino, okay.
On the south side of the road, it's a, it's an oak tree that's coming over. And every time you've got a big heavy equipment coming through, or tractor, trailer, it hit, you could watch, it hits the very top of that trailer. And what happens is the truck goes around the other lane to try to dodge that. One day you're going to have an accident there.
Okay, I'll get with, I'll get with him on that today. However, Commissioner Jones would like the board to consider removing or trimming trees that are in the counties right of way, not the states, that are also impeding drivers as they get to an intersection and they're trying to, you know, get out to other county roads. And like the board to do that, and if any of you have intersections in your district that you would like to address, I would like the motion to cover all of those right now, if the board doesn't mind.
Before we do that, though, I do want to clarify, when I talked, talked to them again about Franklin.
Yeah.
So this is what they said, we just finally repaved the really bad part when you're coming off of ninety-eight onto that, or to Jefferson, I'm sorry, I said Franklin.
That's because of me.
We repaved it, but they haven't painted the stop bar yet. So I asked Jason White and them to move the stop bar closer to ninety-eight. So when you're stopping at the stop bar, you can actually see past the tree.
That was one of the recommendations.
Because currently it's, it's behind it, you know, that's right where you are.
Yes, Commissioner, that's one of the F D O T recommendations, one of the options they say we should consider.
And, and the motion we're talking about considering too now, I'm going to get with Mr. Howard on the ones I'm talking about and make sure they are on right of way. Even on somebody's property.
If, if you would, with this motion, I'd like the motion to also include that if, for some reason, the road department is unable to cut the tree, we can go ahead and get a contractor to do it, as long it's under the, our bid policy, falls under that maximum.
I'm good with all those things. Pleasure of the board. Motion to approve by Commissioner Amerson, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any other discussion on this motion before we vote? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
All right, commissioners, I think we addressed item four already. Item five, board members have asked for a current list of the Williams Board of Directors members. I attached that to my report. Currently, there are two members with expired terms. Therefore, this board will need to either appoint new members or renew the terms of the current members. It's, you can do it today, or you can take it, take a little bit longer to look at the list, see if you want to. But the appointments will have to come from Commissioner Sanders and Commissioner Amerson, either to renew or replace. And you could let me know either today, if it's a possible action, or we could do it at the next meeting. Your call.
I want to go ahead and appoint mine today.
Okay.
To the hospital board. If you don't mind, Mr. Chairman.
No, no, no.
Do you mind? Okay, my, my, or the person that was representing District Two, he, he's termed out. So I'm going to make a motion that we put Mr. John Berry, the Alligator Point, on there.
Michael, what about some of the ones that have expired terms?
I thought there were only two that had expired terms.
Well, I think one of them's in Commissioner Lockley's district, though, and he's not here today.
Okay, I'll double check.
You know what I'm saying?
And I'll, I'll let him know. I thought it was only two, I, oversight of my end, Commissioner. Commissioner Amerson, you could wait till next meeting.
So we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders to appoint Mr. John Berry to serve in her representative seat for the Williams Board of Directors.
You're so quiet.
Y'all both said half the word. We have a motion by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Ward. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor? Opposed? That's unanimous.
Item six, Commissioner, Chairman Jones, this is more for you. At the last meeting, the board discussed moving some of those benches that's located throughout East Point. Chairman Jones has suggested relocating these benches to the Caribou Beach area. I'll let him say specifically where he's thinking about, see how you guys feel about it.
It's, it's, since we've redone the wayside part, I think we'll get more use out of them for what they're intended to be in an area either there or down by McKissit Park, I think, or that area. We'd probably get more use out of them than what they're currently getting used, and it definitely would not be a detriment to that area. But now, they do need to be, once they get removed, they do need to either be pressure washed or, you know what I mean? Because some people have defaced them, they've done all kinds of stuff to them. But I, I think it would be beneficial, as long as Commissioner Ward's good with it, to move them somewhere in that district, so it would be, have more use than what they do now.
Mr. Chairman, I'm okay with that. I just don't want it in front, because the way the sidewalk is, I know in East Point, that's kind of where they were, we're kind of on the sidewalks, people on the sidewalk can utilize them. I really don't want them, the way the sidewalk's set up in Caribou, I don't think anybody would want them on there or close to, I know it's our right of way, but I would think that nobody would want them in front of their home or property, as you know, there's a lot of houses along that, that roadway there where the sidewalk is. So as long as it's not impeding on any of their, their homes, unless the person wants to reach out and say, yeah, I'll take one in front of my house, that's a different story. But I think that that's, that's, I'm okay with that, as long as it's not in front, in front of somebody's home.
How, how many benches?
Three.
Commissioner Ward, why don't you kind of pick the spots, and then we'll, we'll work on putting them there?
Okay.
And then, because you could reach out to your constituents and say, hey, I want to put here, how do you feel?
I know we're getting that crosswalk, one should, probably could go there, that way somebody, you know, with handicap issues, they need to sit down while they're waiting for the, the crosswalk lights to flash.
Good idea.
We put one definitely there.
In the lighthouse.
In the lighthouse is probably a good place.
Yeah, around the lighthouse.
And I'll, I'll look at, think about some other areas.
I can have a good idea, Jessica.
I defer to you commissioners, your district, but I, I just.
Thank you for giving me some of your benches.
I know they're having problems where they are right now, so. Did we make, anybody ever make a motion about that?
Do we need a motion on that?
Really, I, I said that just, you know, just in case, but no, I.
If we don't need a motion, I'm good with it.
Okay. Item seven, I'm not going to read all this, okay, simple oversight in my end, I guess, again, getting ready for that marathon of a meeting we had in the first. So I stated in the whole dredge, you know, skipping the area closest to the river, so we can dredge around Buddy, also known as Buddy Ward Park, or the other way around. I said there would have been no cost to the county, I should have said there would have been a reduced cost to the county, okay? We won't get estimate, I talked to the contractor last week, late last week. He said until the Corps actually signs off and allowing him to skip that area that we refer to, we won't, you know, he, he can't give us a proposal until then. So once he gets that, I'll bring that back to the board. That was just, that's more of a correction item, more than anything else, commissioners, all right? So, Mr. Carrington, if I, if I may, if you guys have any other questions. Item eight, Mr. Carrington, your planner, you received notification, which I hope I copied the email to your attachments from the Corps, that funds are available to, funds are available for a study, to fund a study. After reviewing the attached information that includes information sheets on planning assistance to states and flood plain management services, which I gave to Mrs. Lolly, she, she's had that, she's looking it over. Along with a draft letter of interest, you can contact Mr. Carrington to discuss some possible projects. Or contact Mrs. Lolly to see what she has in mind, and together you guys can contact Mark to see if we can get some funds for some studies done. These, these are not construction funds, these are implementation funds, these are studies. Thank God, well, Commissioner Lockley isn't here to come after me about studies, but, you know, yeah. We know how he feels about those. But that's just for information for you guys to know. A reminder this afternoon, this evening, afternoon, evening, five o'clock, you have three public hearings and a workshop. They will be streamed on Zoom only, they will not be streamed by Forgotten Coast Television. So if you're not here in the house, you need to log into Zoom to see or participate in those public hearings and that workshop. And your next meeting is Tuesday, September fifth at nine A M. Keep in mind, this is one of the odd months that Erin and I really live for, because there are five Tuesdays in a month, so it'll be, it'll be two more weeks before we have a meeting rather than one or three or whatever.
Time to take a vacation.
A couple more things, but they're information only. So I received an email yesterday, last night from Representative Cho's office, the appropriations project request forms, they are ready for us to fill out. I will actually have a formal item on my, on my September fifth report about that. Commissioners, it's time for you to start thinking about those projects, so we can sit with Tracy, Ms. Busby, and, and then also sit with our lobbyists in coordination and try and see what projects we would like to submit to the legislature for funding. You were just talking about one, Commissioner Ward, some funding for more Firdap funds, I believe. And so, yeah, so, but, we'll talk about it more, but you have a few weeks to start really considering that and just giving us a call and see what you guys think you'd like. And the Alligator Point Fire Department, they wanted to inform, and forgive me, because I'm working off a picture that.
September second.
Yeah.
Was the email you sent before?
Yeah, I'm trying to open this, that's, you know, I'm not good at. I hate to look over my glasses, wait. Letters to notify you that the Alligator Point Volunteer Fire Department has moved into its new facility at one oh one Tom Roberts Road, Alligator Point. We have vacated the old station, and we're ready to turn possession over to Franklin County. The keys are enclosed, do you have that, sir?
During the break, the keys were handed to me.
Look at you.
And the utilities have been turned off. Having possession of keys and money or something, I don't want either of you, so there you go.
Oh, thanks. Unless we hear otherwise from you, we plan to have utilities at the station turned off, which Attorney Shuler just said, on Friday, August eighteenth, that's this Friday coming. And they look forward to having you attend the open house on Saturday, September second. That's from Ms. Jaeger, President, Alligator Point Volunteer Fire Department. And that's it, commissioners.
Mr. Rome, before we go to Attorney Shuler, I've been kind of unsuccessful about the back and forth I've been trying to have with the Corps about the quality of the product in East Point. So I'm going to reach out to them, try to reach out to them again before this week is out.
Okay.
But if I can't hear nothing before this week is out, I'm going to make sure, Mr. Rome, that you know that, so all of the commissioners, anybody else that's concerned in Franklin County, we're going to light them up.
Yep.
If they don't want to respond to one of us, they'll hear from all of us. So we've been trying to, you know, be civil about it and just, you know, say, come and show us what we're trying to do, and they've talked about doing, but they haven't followed through with it, is actually coming down and getting in a boat themselves and riding with us and looking at it.
Yeah.
Which would be self-explanatory if they would do that. So that's all we're asking for, because the permit's still good for five years. You know, so there's still things to do, but it, the most advantageous thing for us and for them right now is they still have a dredge in Appalachia. All we want is that dredge to come to East Point, they can probably do it in a couple of days, because most of it's been done, but some spots just weren't done right.
Mr. Chairman, so Commissioner Amerson, he'll probably speak to this more. We, that, that meeting I told you about, we had with the contractor, we learned, we learned something we didn't know before. So we have been going based on the permit, the length that they permitted for dredge. The contractor informed us that the contract he had with them, it's actually shorter in length than what the, what's permitted.
That's what we, we.
I'll let Commissioner Amerson take over from here, yeah.
I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, wait.
That's what I was telling you.
They wanted you to interrupt.
That's, that's what I was trying to explain to you the last meeting, that, that, the map we've seen has been the permit map. That was not the contract map. So everything we was assuming was going to go down, didn't go down at all. And, and that's, I think that's where the, yeah, that was where the confusion was, on, on our behalf, because that was the information we were beginning to give it.
Yes. But, and see, the other, the other glaring issue with that is, though, that permit map, if we refer to it that way, when we had the original kickoff meeting to, they're, they're going to start to do this, that was what they presented to the county and to the people that were seeing it, was the permit map.
When you say they, is that the Corps?
Yes, sir, we had a, like a, starting a project kind of. Yes, sir, we had a, like a starting a project kind of meeting, you know what I mean? And that was the maps that they presented, that was in the handouts that day at the Commissioner meeting, was the map of the permit. So that's what everybody's looking at, you know what I mean, so. We just got off on the wrong foot, several times.
Mr. Chairman, I'll say that, for one, I'll be happy to make a phone call or light anybody up that needs to be lit up, because this has been a passion of mine as well, and I've gotten aggravated with it. Furthermore, it may get to the point where I thought about it, and I was going to talk to Attorney Schuler about it at some point, I, we all have a contract that the Army Corps has with the county in terms of the dredge, but we do not have a contract that the dredge has with the contractor. So that might be something we might need to do a FOIA request to acquire, to get an idea of what was discussed and what was agreed upon between the two entities. That's going to help us understand why things got so messed up.
Yep.
In my opinion.
Yep, I agree. A contract between the Corps and the main dredge contract, not the subs, just the main dredge contract.
Yep, yep.
You are so right, Commissioner.
Well, can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman? Did you ever have a response from the Congressman?
I have talked to them some, but they have been in a mode of trying to see if the Corps would help us work this out first. So there's not been any real.
That's why, that's why you contacted them to start with, because the Corps would not work for you. So that's when you called the Congressman?
Yes.
Okay.
But I also, to follow up with that, also had discussions over several times, over these months, with people from Senator Rubio's office, his staff, and they told us right before Congressman Dunn's people came, and we took them out on both, he said, "Well, we're still waiting for them to respond, we're waiting for them to respond." He told me that same day, somebody from Rubio's office, that the, any federal agency has up to six months to respond to requests for information, and I told him, I said, "Well, if a sitting senator can't get the information, I don't think I'm ever going to get it."
That explains a lot, gentlemen.
So that's what I was told. I don't know if that to be true, but that's, that's what we were told, so take it as a matter.
Well, if you need any of it.
We're about done, we shouldn't have promised.
It'd be like the rider strike in California, we'll go up there with our sign and pick it, wherever they are.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question. Now, we paid this contractor to go out and beyond the, well, it was in the permitted area, but it wasn't a contractual area, but why can't we hold them accountable with the money we're paying? I mean, I don't cut them a check, because they didn't do the job.
Well, we actually have a.
I mean, that's the best way to do it, and when he calls and wants his check, tell him to call the chairman, or call one of us other Commissioners, and we'll tell him to get his bucket back out there and go to scoop him, because I don't see why, you know, if the Corps of Engineers wants to strike them a check and let them move on for what area they're at, we shouldn't pay them for what we went outside the contract and paid for.
We actually have.
Well, I'm just saying, in the future, even if they send a bill, I would, I'll, I'm just telling you, don't write them a check until the job's done, and that's the best way to handle it.
Make a motion to hold the check.
I'll make that motion.
That's what I'm saying.
I'll second your motion.
He's made the motion, Mr. Chairman.
That's the best thing to do.
I second the motion, I second the motion to hold the check.
Well, while we're at it, but I know we're going away from our agenda, I don't know procedurally what we, but if that's the case, then I'm going to make a motion to.
Hold on, we got one more.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, you got this.
That much I do know.
You know, let some fire up now. I said, "Light fire," we let some fires.
So since this wasn't on our agenda, does anyone in the public want to comment about it before we take action?
That's right, that's right.
Goatee.
Goatee.
I don't know if we even have anybody still online, do we, Mr. Moore?
We do.
We do, you have a few, sir.
Yeah, I don't see any raised hands.
I don't believe anybody's opposed to it.
Any more discussion before we vote? Thank you, Commissioners, for your support. Listen, because this is not about East Point, it's about Franklin County, I appreciate you, everyone.
It's about the money, it's about the money.
It's about what's right.
And the service not being done for the money that we agreed to.
They're making us look like a bunch of fools.
All right, all in favor?
Want to make a motion?
That's your name.
Yes, I will make a motion to instruct Attorney Schuler to submit an FOIA request to the Corps for a contract between the Corps and the contractor, and what the terms were.
For the East Point project?
For the East Point dredge project, yes.
Second.
Here we have a motion by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders, to try to get us some information. Since this is not on the agenda, does anyone publicly want to comment on this? I see no hands raised on Zoom.
Anyone online would like to comment? No hands raised, sir.
All in favor?
Uh-uh.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
We'll see how long it takes for them to accommodate that request.
You want to say anything while we're under Mr. Moore's report?
Oh, I got.
We're just getting rolling.
I've got some items, and this will follow along. First item is, Michael, if you can, contact David Walker and let him know that Mr. John Bayes is going to be the representative on that hospital.
Oh, I will, I'll send him the contact information.
Also, back to your item number one on your report, Mr. Robert Amick has been doing the job out there, trying to get the fire department together at Land Art, also Mr. Eric Rahalas, also, I want you to thank him on our behalf, the county's behalf, but I want to see what the timeline is, to shake him out, to see when the fire department is going to be up and running, and everything, because I think you all entered into a contract about a year ago, am I right or wrong? To, for their services, we need to get this ball rolling.
Okay.
We need to get this fire department rolling, and every day we don't, that's an ISO rating of 10, and that's not right to anyone in that district, anyone. But go ahead, and if you can, get that message to him, tell him we want a timeline of when we can expect everything to be online, we're getting a new truck, they should have no problem there, and make sure that we don't need to accommodate them any other things that they may need or something, that we can accommodate them. How about that?
That works.
Okay, the ambulance came up here, and that was a good report that Louis did, that filled in a lot of the blanks that we've been needing to know, we're going to have a lot more than blanks filled in, too. Did you ever get ahold of Mr. or Carl and Engron?
Yes, I did.
Had they done the breakdown of the ambulance service and sent it to you?
He's working on it. Actually, what I did, he said it was very helpful, I actually sent the recording of the discussion that the board had, clipped that, sent it to him, he told me that was very helpful, so he's working on it. Actually, Commissioner Amos had also asked, if I'm not wrong, sir, you wanted not just EMS, you wanted the clinics, you wanted a full breakdown, so yes, he is, yeah, he's working on it.
The clinic, well, you're not going to get an accurate number for that hospital until you separate the two clinics and separate the ambulance from it, and then you will see basically a standalone number from the hospital, and it should be doing that.
I got a timeline from Brian, and report it back to you, Commissioner.
Okay, and that was, that was it, there's more stuff that I'll wait until another meeting to bring some more stuff out.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I've got something real quick.
Yes.
A couple meetings back, Michael, I asked for the parking at Wayside Park to be a little, maybe a little different.
Yes.
You're going to reach out to, is it Caleb?
Yes, we're going to have, that's one of my things to talk to you 101 about.
Okay.
For you to reach out to Caleb and kind of explain to him exactly what you want, so he can work on it, yes.
Thank you.
I thought you, oh, yeah, yes, Erin and I have been talking to him about it, so I think it's better if you just tell him exactly what you want, he's going to work on it for us.
One more item from Mr. Moore, this is important, back, I think it's about November, December, I brought up the fact that, yeah, the striping on Alligator Drive, when the previous commissioner was in there, he striped all the way down to the Welcome Garden, but didn't stripe all the way to the end. We need that striped, I know you said you had some projects you want to do, some striping.
Some of the stuff that's already been, have gotten done, has gotten striped, but it was striped without my knowledge, and I was kind of wanting to talk to our road striping crew to kind of talk to them and get some ideas on what to do. I do want some roads paved in my district, but the price that I was given was really steep, and I'm also trying to wait, I know they're still working on that water sewer project in Carabel, and I've got a lot of complaints about that, and they are working on trying to fix those cutouts, and I'm trying to wait until that gets done, too, to ensure that's been done the right way, and see if I need, I don't think it's fair, I use my road paving funds to fix it, but I'm trying to wait till all that gets completed, too, to make sure that, you know, we need to maybe go out and look at some of those roads.
So anything that's done by another entity should be covered by that entity?
I agree.
The city of Apalach has always done theirs, East Point Water Sewer, if we do a road cut, we're responsible to put the pavement back, it should fall under the city.
I agree, and I've talked to city officials about that, and the mayor, and she assured me that their engineer is going to go out and ensure that it's done the right way. I've rode on a couple roads, and they've done, they have fixed a couple, but they're still waiting on fixing some more, but there is a road in that area that, in my opinion, beacon, that definitely needs to be resurfaced, and so, there's multiple roads, and I did ride out with Roberts and Roberts, and I guess I need to get back with them and see what's, when they're going to be here, and all that kind of good stuff, but.
Well, Commissioner Sanders, first question, do you want to wait until we have other projects to do, so it saves you money on striping?
Because if I don't, it's going to cost you on and a leg.
Just to get the company here to stripe, it's going to cost a lot of money on its own.
I mean, you used to get something striped for like $10,000 to $20,000, you're talking about $80,000 now.
And what, what we'll do is, once we have a combination of roads to be paved and or striped, then we'll put it out there and see if we could, if it's, I doubt it'll be under, there's no way it'll be under, we'll just have to put it out for bid.
Well, I've given a list out, I mean, you probably still have my list that I gave you, but again, like I said, they came and just did it, and I didn't know they were even here, and I was kind of wanting to reach out to them, but, and I understand they're not in the county anymore, so now we have to pay a mobilization fee for them to come back, perhaps, because I know they're missed up the line in Liberty County, but Erin had something, she keeps raising the.
Yeah, yeah, actually during the budget process, I did talk with you all, and we're trying to actually start bidding our road paving projects differently, so, you know, starting the new fiscal year, we'll actually kind of go out more of a component way, so, you know, each time you guys will actually submit a, you know, a slate of roads, and then we'll actually go out and actually have bid alternates, you know, and that way it may take, you know, going out for bid twice a year, once a year for road paving projects, just for county funded, but that'll be something I think will result in more competition for you all.
Yep, better pricing.
I know we do need to get a, try to get a better bang for our buck, because especially with the inflation prices are right now, this is my opinion, I want to get, you know, a lot of roads paved, but the price that I was given was, like, pretty much blew through my whole budget of my road paving funds, and I.
That does not take long.
I don't want to do that, something emergency comes up, I'll be, you know, in a hole, and I don't want to do that, so.
And prices have been coming back all over the place, you know, as evidenced by the fencing estimates that we received.
Anything else? Attorney Schuler, you're up.
All right. Commissioner Ward has asked me a question during the break regarding this potential contract for the purchase and sale of the old Gulf State Bank building located at the intersection of Highway 98 and Island Drive in East Point. Her question was related to the fact that one of the realtors involved is a distant relative by marriage, at least a third cousin, I believe you said, to Commissioner Ward. I have looked at the statute, she does not have a voting conflict, there's a statute out there that essentially says you can't vote for or against a project that would ignore to the special benefit or detriment of a relative, but the wife of a third cousin is not included in the definition of relatives, so she does not have a voting conflict, and she can participate in this matter. You've got my report, the report speaks for itself, I'll be happy to go through any particular item, but I do have some additional information that I received from the real estate company subsequent to sending my report out on Friday, and essentially, they have agreed to the different items that I have listed in my report to you, in terms of, for example, the due diligence period for the county would be 45 business days, I think it was just a matter of trying to get the contract language together, but they have agreed to that. What they said was they changed the addendum to 45 business days, or within 20 days of receipt of the last appraisal, whichever was earlier, they would add that language in, saying, so that there would be no conflict with the closing occurring 30 days after receipt of the final second appraisal, I'm okay with that language. As far as the indemnity, as I've mentioned in my report, I am, this is a matter of policy, I'm strongly opposed to the county indemnifying anybody for anything, for any reason, I mean, in my own personal business, I've walked away from a number of transactions, and somebody wants an indemnification, simply because it's, effectively, you're writing a blank check to somebody. But in this case, if they won't agree with that, then they have agreed to add in some language that essentially would track the state statute, which provides for the limited waiver of sovereign immunity. So my first go would be to suggest just completely eliminating the indemnity, and if that doesn't work, then to amend it so that the limited waiver of sovereign immunity comports with the statutory provision, which I believe is still a maximum of like $200,000. It's, although I do think it's a little risk, it's still a risk that you can't quantify, and you never know when lightning would strike, but nonetheless, I get the sense that they are willing to work with the county on that issue. On the appraisal cost, I mentioned in my email to Purr that what we've been doing in our typical contracts is the board and the parties would equally split the cost of the appraisals if we go to closing, if for some reason we don't go to closing, then the contracts have provided that the county would pay for the appraisals. I spoke with Matt Terry, who's the appraiser that we've been using, and he's estimating basically between $2,500 to $2,750 for his appraisal fee. I've spoken to a second appraiser, his was more, had a not to exceed $7,500, so I'm going to talk to some other appraisals, because really, you shouldn't cost more than about $2,500 to $3,000 to do these types of appraisals. But in any event, the realtor has written back and said that they are okay with equally splitting the cost of the appraisal. Now, this contract is a little bit different, as I mentioned in my report, than our typical contracts, because what I had typically provided in prior contracts is, if we get to closing, in other words, the appraisal comes within that price range, then we throw all the closing expenses into one pot and equally split it. In this case, what the proposal from the seller's realtor is to, for them to pay for the title insurance and to pay the doc stamps on the deed, and that's going to be probably close to, I would estimate, a $10,000 plus cost to them, we would not be paying any of that, and so, but I've still asked them to consider equally splitting the cost of the appraisals, and I sensed from this email that they have agreed to do so. The final issue, let me look, okay, this was on the Exhibit A, I had asked them to add in some language, simply because when you look at a meets and bounds legal description, I mean, you can sit there and scratch your head and wonder where it is, so they've agreed to my proposal to add in that that legal description is the same part of land known as the old Gulf State Bank building located at the intersection of 98 and Island Drive in East Point. There was some, just some superfluous language that needed to be removed about further conditions of closing and allocation of closing costs, which don't apply in this case, it was just something that, you know, we all missed, and then they had wanted a letter from the county's financial institution stating that we had enough money for the cash transaction, and I'd asked them to change that, that the county would just provide a letter, but they have agreed to that. The one thing that is in this contract, but is not in my report, I think it's important to bring up, is that the seller will be paying all of the commission on this transaction, the county is not paying any of the commission. I'll bring that up because if you look at line 300 or 300 on the contract, it refers to the buyer's broker, the county being the buyer, but if you flip over to page 302 and 303, it says that there is no brokerage relationship, and that the broker will be compensated by the seller, so all the boxes where the buyer pays a commission are not checked. So unless the board has any further questions for me, that concludes my presentation.
Okay, I do have one thought, and I want to see how the rest of the board feels about it. I don't want to hold up the process, so if we do make a motion, I want to include it in the motion. I would like to ask that the bottom number be closer to 950, or at least consider that much of a range, because here's the thing, we're having to go out for appraisals, the county's not going to be able to pay over the appraised price. The county's not going to be able to pay over the appraised price. So that, that's my only thought. Now, if they choose to say no, or they want to keep it the same, I'm fine with that. I'm not trying to make it have to come back to the board again, you know, go through that process. That, that's my only discussion that I wanted to bring up about it.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with you completely. I would express my concerns, the real estate agent, about, you know, again, I'm a lawyer, I'm not an appraiser, but I am concerned about the compressed nature of the price range, because if the appraisals on average come back and they fall outside that range, and the county potentially could have spent, you know, $6,000 or maybe a little bit more on appraisals, and, I mean, nobody gets the benefit of the bargain.
Right.
So.
So what was that number?
950. So the range would be from 950 to 1 million, 1.17 million.
I'll make that motion to proceed with this based on the num, with the limitation of the numbers.
So we have a motion from Commissioner Ward, second from Commissioner Amison. So let me clarify, I do want to say this. If the seller isn't comfortable with those numbers, I'm fine with using what we're looking at today. But, you know what I mean, I don't want it to be a protracted thing where you got to come back to us and they got to get back to, you know what I mean? But I, I do think we need to ask for a lower number.
Okay. And it was 950, correct?
Yes.
That was the motion?
Any more discussion before we vote? And I guess we're voting on the whole thing or just the, what we're talking about now, correct?
I will ask this question for Commissioner Ward to tell me if I correctly understand her motion. I understand the motion to be to approve the contract as has been described in my report and in my presentation this morning, and also with the further change that you mentioned, Commissioner, or Chairman Jones, in terms of asking for the range to be reduced from where it is now, which is a million, 20,000 to a million 170, change that with a request of $950,000 to the low end of the range, and then the high end of the range would be 1,170,000, which is their listing price, so.
All right. Okay.
That's correct.
All right. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
All opposed? That's your end.
All right. And then the other item on my report is a draft contract. It's written mainly for Landarc Village, St. James Volunteer Fire Department, because that's who we're dealing with first, but I have also added in some language just to point out to the board that there will be some differences, fairly substantial differences, between this form of the contract and the other volunteer fire department contract. For example, we presently own the fire department in, in Landarc, St. James. We do not own any of the other fire departments. So some of the language and verbiage in this lease would need to be changed for the, you know, the specific purposes of the other departments. I'm not sure how deep into the discussion the board wants to get into this contract today. My, my intention was to present this to you, because I know it's the first time you're seeing it. I can go through as much of the presentation, the different items that are covered in the contract as you like, or if the board wants to take this under consideration and maul it over and bring it up at another meeting. That would be fine, because I know we don't have a sense of urgency in the sense that Landarc, St. James is about to be stood up tomorrow, and you have to make a decision. So there's time in my book, and that was part of the reason we're giving it to you early.
Mr. Chairman, that's what I'd like to do, because this, this contract with, about Landarc Fire Department is pretty lengthy.
Yes, very.
And it's got some, some new elements in it. And it's like you said, this is toward, geared toward Landarc. But I, I said from the very get-go, when you, when you have MSBE funds, when you have any kind of public money going to entities, this board really needs to make sure that we're on top of it all, because what happened to Landarc could very surely happen to any other department. And this concerned me, but I would like to, I'd rather go and be able to, like you said, maul over and come back to the board and maybe at the next meeting and just kind of like go over the guidelines and stuff like that, that we're aware of what, what I'm asking to do as far as the contract for Landarc. Because we are going to have to keep, because the situation with Landarc, there's going to have to be a certain degree of oversight from the board over the department, the fire department, for a while there, to make sure everything up to par, once they get up and running. That's the reason why we need a timeline from the gentleman and all. But Mr. Chairman, I would say let's just wait until next meeting, until we look at this, because it's pretty lengthy.
Okay. Anything else, sir?
Yes, sir. The supplemental action item on my report that I sent out yesterday afternoon, the last board meeting, the board, at the request of Chairman Jones, had asked me to look at a five-foot public beach access that is for, just for discussion purposes, located between Sunset Beach and 300 Ocean Mile on St. George Island. I have reviewed the plat of Sunset Beach, and it sure appears to me that there is a five-foot public beach access provided for on that plat. However, I think it needs to be surveyed, so we actually know where that five-foot easement is on the ground as opposed to just being on a sheet of paper. So I'm requesting board approval to order a survey of that five-foot public beach access.
opposed to the board? Have a motion by Commissioner Amison?
I got a, I'll second with a question.
Second by Commissioner Ward, please proceed.
And just so the public's aware, Attorney Schuler, why is it, why are we required now to get this survey? Is there any reason that may have come up that is requiring us to get a survey now?
Well, if we're going to follow through where I think we're going, which is to open up that beach access, which the colloquial understanding is that it's being blocked, the public's being blocked off from using that access easement. If we're going to open up public beach access, we need to make sure we know where they are. And I think that's consistent where we surveyed out some other public beach accesses years ago at the Chairman Jones's direction, to open up other public beach access ways on St. George Island.
Thank you for the clarification.
And where this, Commissioner Ward, where this spot is at, if the two HOAs agreed about where that access was, we would not probably have them surveyed.
That's what I was asking. I figured there was a reason.
They definitely do not agree.
I had been successful in my attempt to communicate directly with the HOAs, President.
Any, any more discussion before we vote on allowing this to be surveyed?
Can I move?
No, all right.
I think I made the motion.
No, no, don't make a motion.
Yeah.
You were waiting on me, I'm sorry. That's my fault.
I'm waiting on you.
Motion to approve?
I think I already made the motion, didn't I?
I made the motion.
So you had the motion, right?
Yeah.
All right. All in favor? All opposed?
It hasn't been a long day yet.
I'm hearing, I'm hearing.
Only the last one, right?
I am hearing the thunder and outside, and that thunder, I don't like it.
Trying to get that, anything else, sir?
Trying to get the house.
Actually, yes, sir. Um, this is regarding the purchase and sale contract with the three acres on Highway 65 in East Point Water Sewer District. I have received contact information for the St. Joe Company. The St. Joe Company needs to be contacted regarding that purchase and sale, because the title work came back from, I guess, Smith Thompson and Shaw. There are two action items that they have to have from St. Joe Company, a corrective instrument and a release of the right of first refusal. I've not had a lot of success in getting a call back yet, so I'm thinking a formal letter signed by the chairman to them, requesting they respond might be helpful. So I'm requesting, I know it's off the agenda, but this authorization for the chairman or Mr. Morong, I guess Mike could send it, to send a letter to the St. Joe Company, saying, hey, here's a copy of our title commitment. We need you to respond to these two items, and please contact either myself or Mr. Morong to move the process forward.
So are you asking for board direction or are you asking for motion and vote?
I think, I'd rather have official action from the board.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
All right. So we have a motion by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Amison. Send us a letter to St. Joe Company and see if they will give up their right of first refusal to this property or potentially looking at buying. Since this was not on the agenda, does anyone publicly like to comment on this? Mr. Morong, would you ask on Zoom?
Anyone attending via Zoom would like to comment, please do so by raising your hand. No hands raised, Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor? All opposed? That's your end. Anything else, sir?
No, sir.
Anyone have anything for Attorney Schuler? All right. Any Commissioner comments today?
Are you, is there anybody in the county you're not related to possibly?
Probably not.
I mean, I was trying to break up my family tree to figure out, you know, where I was in relation to this realtor on this contract, but that I didn't realize until I was perusing the con, the agenda a couple, when we got it the other night. But anyway, to answer your question, probably not. I'm related to everybody, just not the wards. Not the local wards. Just wanted to point that out.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I had Commissioner comments and stuff set up till after the public hearings. We're, we're going to go into recess now, and then we'll reconvene at 5:00.
I forgot about that.
Yes, sir.
That's new for us.
That is new for us, isn't it?
So we're going to recess till 5:00.